We are live.
Call this the microphone.
Call meeting in order and stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Roll call.
We have two board members missing, Randy and Mark. Principals are here. Lieutenant Alwender is here and Assistant Chief Bethany is here.
A motion for adoption of the agenda.
Yes, sir.
And a second?
A second.
We have some personnel issues to add that's listed in front of you. Any other additions, corrections, subtractions for the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side. Moving on to item five, communications recognition.
Nobody here.
June, shocking.
Yes.
Moving on to board committees. So, C committee?
I only got in on the end, tail end of it, and the note I wrote is Medicaid reimbursements for mental health social workers in school. Were you on it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that something new?
It's been around for a while. It's just, it's something they've been working through, especially for lots, they get reimbursed for MA. It just takes a lot of training to do it, and it takes a lot of time.
Oh, okay.
Rather than cumbersome.
Okay. I don't know if there are other things that you want to share, but...
Well, the, uh, the other thing is we already through our school therapist, most of what she does is RAN.
Okay.
With some of this, well, with some of the special ed, they do have disabilities that fall under MA. But the therapist definitely is all counseling under MA. But it was just, a lot of it was an attempt to wrap up the legislative section, which I'll talk about tonight. Some of the things that they're going to be trying to move forward with, especially with the rebranding and everything in the C organization and finding a new director. Brad Lundell's been there for, I would say at least 25 years, so he's going to be a hard person to replace.
West Central?
Um, it was an extra meeting just put together so that we could, um, okay contracts. So, that was all we did. We all, they were a couple out there, like the Paris for in Paismont stuff, they're still working, but they think they'll have them.
The spiritualism.
Yes. Sale. Otherwise, that was all we did then.
The director comes on board live first. Aaron Thompson? You guys remember Aaron Thompson?
Yep.
Aaron Thompson. I always wanted to say Johnson, but I've been confused enough that I don't say Aaron Thompson.
C nets?
Uh, I also did not attend that meeting, but, um, it was just the dissolution of C nets. So, it was the final meeting. She just evolved, she dissolved C nets. So, it was on Friday morning, I went down to take a rap. So, there wasn't much on it. I checked the minutes. That was funny.
I know loose ends.
Well, the only loose end is that they will divide up the fund balance of C nets and we'll all get a share of the fund balance. I don't remember the exact, our number is?
I don't remember either.
Seven thousand nine hundred some dollars, and we'll get back to C nets.
Pretty close. We received it today.
How much?
It's right, seventy-nine hundred dollars.
We got it today.
Right around there, we got it today.
That's as good as my memory is, when I tell you.
That's pretty good. You didn't come up with the eighteen dollars and twenty-seven cents back.
That one is, it can't be that quite precise.
Moving on to administrative reports.
Good evening, everybody. We are working on social studies and science post things, obviously. We see tonight that social studies, uh, posting, it's great. We are working on the college component, and I'm pretty optimistic that, pretty optimistic that we got that. Some light work with both of the colleges that we work with and some of the phones, what I was following on tonight. So, at any rate, uh, science is a little tricky because it's just, we find people. So, we are, we, Mr. Anderson and I and anybody else that has any ideas, we're going to cross our fingers that we'll come up with some leads, but they're hard to find right now.
They're science, science teachers?
Yes. So, it's a combination, let's go science aid slash bio position. She don't need masters. Not for that. That person doesn't need anything. It's go hard. It's just, just, you know. I've got one potential lead from a different administrator. From the west central area. So, following up on that. Emails, uh, correspondence on Sunday, actually got a response back today. So, cross our fingers. It'll be, if we hear something, let's interview. If we hear something, let's interview. That's just the way we're going to have to do it.
Science is difficult because it's not science license. It's biology, it's chemistry, it's physics. Each one of them have individual license, so it's difficult. It's not like math. So, you're not looking for a science teacher.
You're looking for a science teacher with specialization.
Yep.
Chemistry, physics, life science, so.
Why are we looking, why, I'm sorry to be dumb here, but you're looking for a general science teacher.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a biology. We're really looking for a biology teacher.
It's a late resignation.
But we have a bi, I mean, but they're teaching ninth grade physical science.
Yep.
They're not teaching the college level bio.
No. But yeah, they're going to teach eighth grade physical science and tenth grade biology. But that's the difficult part with science teachers is that they're, they're so individualized. It's not like math or social studies where you don't get a science license. You get a biology or you get a chemistry and physics license.
And if you have that, you can teach science.
It's not specialization.
Yeah.
But if they have a graduate degree.
If they have a graduate degree, but find somebody with a graduate degree also. But if they had a graduate degree, it'd be a different criteria. Um, I'd have to double check on that with the Felsby. Felsby is a little bit more, they're a little bit more flexible, I think, at this point, but I'd have to double check with the graduate component. I know, I think it would work. It's just that there are pieces of that puzzle that there may need to be tier renewals, I think, earlier or more often than what they currently are right now. A tier four is, I think it's every five years, a tier one, two, it's got to be renewed quite often. The person, I think, that the masters or graduate, but I definitely would pursue something.
How does middle school science work, anything? Or is that different?
Well, it's ten years ago, wow. For a certain period of time, I don't know if you remember, you used to get a middle school endorsement as an elementary teacher. Used to have to pick a middle school endorsement. Now, they don't, you don't do that. So, anybody within the last 10 years is licensed K six as an elementary person, or probably one six as an elementary person. Where they don't have, so they can teach up through sixth grade. Before that, you would take a middle school endorsement as science, math, social studies, whatever, and then they could teach through eighth grade.
And that was more broad.
That was more broad. Yep.
So, we run into trouble even on the middle school side.
Oh, yeah.
Because that's physical science by the time you're in.
And science right now is difficult because they just changed all the standards. They just changed when things, what grade level things are taught in. So, everybody in the whole state is rearranging things, knowing if they have to hire, move things around.
So, if you've found a viable science teacher, can you get a variance for a year to get?
You'd get an out-of-field permission there now, yep. And those are, you, you have to renew those every year, and there's certain criteria they have to do to get another one the following year. They have to do so much stuff.
To get a little.
Yep.
So, do it long enough, do they become certified?
Got to get your degree.
Yep. And we can only submit the stuff on July 1st. So, we have to pull down paperwork until the first of July.
Well, it's a joint report, so. Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no.
Questions?
Yeah, well, the, the end of the square for the middle school ended really well. We ended with the Valley Fair incentive day. It was the first time in many, well, that I can remember that the water park was open, and it was a phenomenal day. And then what the water park being open does is it reduces the amount of people in lines and just provides a whole other huge area of the park to be open, and it was great. I got to hang out with a few kids in the afternoon, and they really enjoyed it. And it, it was, it was one of the better Valley Fair trips that I can remember as far as waiting in lines, the kids being excited. Wasn't a hundred degrees and it wasn't raining, so it was, it was really nice.
My eighth grader didn't want to go even.
Yep. Yeah, it was, it was, it was a gorgeous day. And then what else I wrote in the report was, Mr. Duckett and I are working with our staff on a character building, I call it life skills curriculum. The grants that the middle school is under has went away, so we're looking for something new in this program that is free, is a really well-thought-out program that's been developed for probably about four or five years from a, the, um, it's called SCRED. It's a Saint Croix River District Educational, educational district. Put this together, and they put it out as a free resource. It comes with PowerPoints, all, all of these things. So, um, this spring, the middle school staff got together and we looked at it. They really liked it, so now their job is to get together as separate grade level teams and decide which lessons they're going to do throughout the year. They're really excited about something new, something more engaging for the students, and something that we can change on the fly with the updating stuff that happens in society. So, we're excited about that. We're doing it as a middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and I think Mr. Duckett is, we are starting the first year.
Some offshoot similar, similar lessons that are just shorter in nature for.
So, do we do it like once a month again, like each year?
So, our sixth grade will do it every week for about probably, I would say eighteen or nineteen weeks, depending on what the week looks like. If it's a short week, they probably won't do it. And seventh and eighth grade, this year, seventh grade had fourteen lessons and eighth grade had twelve lessons. But they're looking at the curriculum and along with the health teacher who piggybacks off of all of that, all the, of the topics they work together. I'm guessing there's going to be more lessons that they're going to want to go through because they're more engaging for the students. There's more videos, there's more visuals, um, things like that. So, what happens is I ask, um, four core teachers to give up time within their subject to teach all. So, they'll teach that lesson all day to every kid.
Okay.
It's like each teacher gives up about two or three days throughout the year, um, to, to go through this curriculum.
Our framework is.
So, you're going to do it in your core too, or not in?
Yeah. We're doing it in our eighth grade core. I call the ninth grade, if I add the core because everybody takes it.
Okay.
So, so we anticipate somewhere around twenty lessons is probably what it's going to be. The nice thing about this curriculum, uh, that Mr. Anderson has discussed is that we probably have enough material basically for, for your cycle. Just reevaluating, yeah, just to determine, okay, what do we, we'll focus on? What should we expand on? Say something.
And it, it has very good resources. We, we will, we, there's a part that you'll do with everybody, and then there are follow-up lessons that you can do with your tier-two students that need a little more intensive, direct, um, work with our MTSS team on specific topics. So, it, it's really thought out, it's, it's really well put together, um, and luckily it's a free resource for us, so.
That's awesome. Do they have funding for it or?
Um, I think they have written a lot of grants for it. And I, I know it's, the, the grants that we were a part of in the middle school is taking a year off and looking at curriculums all over again. And they asked for feedback from myself and the, the middle school team. And one of my things that I gave feedback was to have a flexible curriculum like that. So, they're looking at that curriculum as a part, um, because they're going to offer the grant again in the future, so.
Mr. Anderson?
Like in my report said, and we have our schedules, our class rosters, school supply list, the room places, all of that has been completed. Probably the most exciting is all our positions are filled, so that's been good. All contracts are signed and people are getting their paperwork, people working and all that, very eager and excited to come. And it's been fun to hear the responses when we call off a new teacher and offer them their first job, how excited they are, and everyone has been so positive, so calm, and, um, really excited. We have one that's looking into one of the new apartment places, hoping to get a place to live, and was excited to know that that was an option, so that was good too. Um, bus, Jessica sent all the bus reports before she was done in June for the summer. Some of the bus contractors have that to start looking at, and of course, they, she'll be looking at them in August, giving updates as we get enrollment. But, um, that's been sent too. I did, in your report, give you some updates on the win room. You can see, you saw that on some of our behavioral goals, the students improved, but did not make our goal of our fourth goal of forty-four percent. But, um, kids that went to the behavioral room and worked on different behavioral skills, social emotional skills, they, we definitely saw a great improvement in reading and math achievement, and that's the goal, is so when they go back to the classroom, because their behavioral skills have improved, they are able to take advantage of the good instruction by the classroom teacher. So, our goal is that they, that we would have fifty percent of them or more that would increase their reading and math. And it saw in the report, we had sixty-three percent that increased in reading achievement, and we had sixty percent on the math achievement. And what's really been great this year is that, um, we've seen that many of them have showed above expected growth. If we have expected growth for students, and we, and then we have above the expected growth. And so, for reading, twenty-two percent of them reached above what we expected them to. So, because their behavioral skills are being addressed, they are getting breaks in the living room, we are seeing that success. And in math, sixteen percent of them showed above the expected growth. So, it's really great to see that, um, impact. And then the different tier-two interventions I listed in your report from Patsas, title one. We can have math core and reading core, which are from the state, and we're very pleased that they're going to continue those. We, about forty percent of the students in those programs met their goal and definitely exited out of the programs and do not need a tier-two support anymore. And, um, the other sixty percent definitely made, um, growth, and some of those actually, um, went from high risk to some risk, so they were very high, and so now they're just barely at risk, and so we're hoping that they stay in the program one more year. Come year, reach their goals. And we had thirteen of them that actually partially met on their MCAs, which they were really excited because they worked really hard to get that far. So, um, we saw some great, um, growth in our academics in the elementary. So, I do appreciate that the board supports our tier-two kids in our MTSS process. It definitely is helping both of the guys.
Good job.
Any questions for you? Mr. Winter?
A number of projects, just the, uh, early summer, midsummer projects that they're working on. The big one is the floor project in the elementary. They put the sealer and the leveler down last Thursday, Friday, and they're waiting all for that to dry or cure. Then they're going to start laying the tile down, which we obviously need to get down before the fourth, so we can switch our lunch program back over to the elementary. Our summer lunch program after the fourth break. Special thanks to Joe Henon, who's in the forum, we've worked quite a bit. He's the one that learned to do us the surplus of really high-quality tile, and he gave us a very good price on it. I talked to Mark Cassi down there, who's the contractor doing the work, and he was saying, you guys got a really good price on that with those materials. So, hopefully, uh, end of this week, early next week, that'll be done before the fourth of July break. There were three other classrooms that are also near completion, the computer lab, uh, room three eighteen, which used to be the win room. That floor is done. I forget what number this Anderson's room is. Looks like they put some type of leveler on that to the level of the cracks in the floor. So, they'll probably be working on that, and that will get done relatively soon. Big one, MSBA legislative wrap-up webinar attended that last Thursday. Lot of updates on E S S T, they're in sick and safe time, uh, the REED Act, the numerous other policies. I'll have to fire up the policy committee, can going here, hopefully, uh, upon my return from out east. Lot of changes in policies, which we knew they were coming. Lot of changes in SD, which we knew they were coming. Lot of changes in the REED Act, which some of those, some of us never guessed were going to happen. One of the big things with the REED Act is, uh, there has been a per student allocation to each district for funding to help schools incorporate and implement reading strategies. And with that money, they, we are also directed to create an MOU with the local union of how that money gets spent. We'll be working on that as well. The nice thing is, as we've talked about here all along, uh, we are well ahead of the implementation of the components of the REED Act. And, um, a lot of our past funding, we just paid for out of our professional development funds. The nice thing with the new funding is there's no, there's, there's a, there's no look back period on it. We don't have to spend all the money now. We can, we can spend that money in ensuing years as we hire more teachers that need training. So, we don't have to exhaust our professional development fund for that. But we just have to get a MOU put together with the local union.
Any questions for Mr. Winter? Moving on to non-action items. A motion to approve the consent agenda as listed. So, move. In a second.
One second.
Want three highlights?
Yeah, just some more hiring for our deck program this summer. Jumpstart the kindergarten, which will occur in August to get our kindergarten students up to a good start before school actually does start. Some teachers that we continue to hire. Unfortunately, some resignations, especially the abandoned of our food service director. I have had three people inquiring in that position, so pretty good candidates, so we'll be okay, I think.
How did kindergarten enrollments look this year?
Our enrollments, yeah, are, are steady right now, and we expect it to go up more because August is usually when our enrollment really kicks in. So, as of right now, where we ended in the spring, I expect it to go up.
Still projecting for section kindergarten, which we would have a, a little space to absorb some students. We don't want to absorb a lot in kindergarten, but it would just become difficult. We're going to, we always lose some students over the summer, and we lose some in kindergarten, but it's always been balanced off by what we bring in. But with our kindergarten roundup, we brought a significant number of students that didn't enroll, which at that time caused us to hire a fourth kindergarten teacher. So, we do have some room.
Do we have a percentage factor of like, what percentage of growth can we currently accommodate?
Oh, if I was to throw a ballpark figure out, we probably have enough room for two, two and a half students per class to keep it, keep the numbers really good.
There's how many classes?
Four sections. Remember, we're going to lose some and we bring some in, so if we, if all of a sudden we got eight, nine, ten, twelve students that can be absorbed fairly comfortably, we start getting more than that, then we're going to be looking for another kindergarten teacher. And worse than that, we're going to be looking for another kindergarten room.
We'll make it work. Yep. And we're very thankful, we have four sections of everything except three and five there. So, we'll be opening it down each section. Yeah, space will be like an issue, but we have, we have a possibility for that.
Good.
Yeah.
We'll make it work.
We'll make it happen. Be a good problem to have.
Other than expressing our, our appreciation for those leaving and our enthusiasm for those coming. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as listed, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Moving on to treasurer's reports. Most who accept approve the treasurer's report as listed. So, move. In a second.
Nothing really major with May, but it's definitely in line with what we've done last year. The one item is we did renew our CD, uh, three quarters taken.
No changes in the balance of where the fund CDs are in the funds in the bank?
No.
Any questions or comments regarding the treasurer's report? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Moving on to donations and gifts. Motion to accept gifts and donations as listed.
Someone?
In a second. Some very generous gifts, I see.
Mall Rose Lions and Freeport Lions, uh, summer programming, some classes, some spring sports. Very much appreciated, and, um, not sure how big that diesel engine is, but, uh, seven thousand dollars, I think it's just one engine.
For that, right?
That will count. I'm sure we're going to put that in the back there. I can, I can.
Make it happen. Make it happen.
Hook it up to a dynamo, only have our electrical backup.
Yeah, really.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, a roll call vote?
Uh, Pat?
Yes.
We, yes, Eric?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Becky, yes.
Motion approved.
I have a B. Motion to accept the bread quote as listed.
Accept.
In a second.
Second.
I shared out a spreadsheet from this year to last year of the bread quotes. Of course, prices are up a little bit. Lee was there at the opening of the quotes. He also notes a little translation on the amount of hot dogs and the price.
Does it finally match the number of hot dogs in the pack?
It never did.
And then we see that.
Last year it was sixteen buns in the bag, now it's twelve, and the bread's went up. I believe the term is called break.
Yep.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Same concept, item C, a motion to accept the milk quote as listed. So, move. Second, please.
Second.
Same spreadsheet I shared out from last year. This year, we've usually been getting two quotes for milk, because it's only creek. Sunny Creek came in, uh, the lowest this year. Been surprising, it's not that much of an increase as compared to our bread increase, which is good. The focus obviously is the chocolate help that money, that's the one that I'm going to focus on. It was only creek. Jerry, I already dealt with that, but we'll have the same business.
It's based on ethics.
Questions or comments hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item D, a motion to approve proposed fiscal year 25 budgets.
Accept.
In a second. I'll say.
So this is a first pass at the budget. I'm gathering that there's a lot of estimates in this. Because a lot of times they're either using what our award for whatever funding was for this year, they're saying same. Or there's nothing and so then we're just kind of estimating. So I took a very conservative approach on both looking at the expenses and looking at the revenue. So this does show deficit spending marginally, but I expect that that will change as we get further numbers. But this is a very conservative, I don't really, I don't expect it to become more deficit.
What enrollment numbers are you using?
The enrollment numbers that are in our systems right now, so it's like 1407 is the A D M. Which is, you know, the weird numbers when you get point two of this kid.
We've used a closer number this year to find a moment that we haven't in the past with the expectation that it will go up. We always knew it would go up last year, but we always kind of under project a little bit this year. We're a little bit closer to what it is.
Just because your business manager is still new and she's really not comfortable trying to project enrollment. So as I get more comfortable with that, then I might be able to play with the numbers. Otherwise, I'm gonna use what N D says as our estimate, which is what I'm using for it.
Why do we have a deficit in scholarships?
It's basically, so we have several new scholarships this year. So we already have the money in this fiscal year that will pay out next fiscal year. And I don't know if they will continue to fund them again. And so that just means it's gonna come out of the fund because they've given us the money in advance of it in the year before.
It's all outs in the weeds of this.
Yeah, they're just not at the same time. I think we had four new scholarships this year. With, yeah, for the $2,000.
It's a, it's a starting point, obviously.
Yes.
And not different from previous years.
It's not the same right now.
End of July, we'll see the final revision of this year's budget. And the rate of audit in September or October.
Yep.
And we've always been pretty close. Like last year, we were off $30,000 surplus last year, if I remember correctly.
With the negotiations settling for the teachers, so I just stood back for a couple of trying to get this done and the final revision for the current school year. So that's why we separated that.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the fiscal, proposed fiscal year 25 budget? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item E, student handbooks. Motion to approve student handbooks as described. So move in a second.
Is this any questions from the board on what we shared out in that document? I know there was a email from a board member that I already shared with the principals that it's pretty quick resolution. A year that was out of lack and a protocol issue that we, that made me very forceful a bit. Any sudden then, any questions for the principals on handbook?
Highlights that you guys see is just new things all the time that we continue to add.
Same.
Yep.
See, oil.
Yeah. Stuff that have come up and then you look in the handbook and realize it says nothing. And then you mark it down to put something in it just at the same there. Every, every year, we just try to come up with things.
And most of those are coming from, a lot of it's coming from. Well, coming through the legislature too, one of the things in the policy eventually will be reflected in handbook is we have to release students for teletherapy now within the school day.
Yeah.
Provide a place and provide technology for it.
And we utilize the L S S P R, our principal surrounding organization as that is, is piercing to. Yeah, it's really, pretty much all of the majority of the adjustments are mandated by legislation. Just felt. Sorry.
Quick one.
Questions or comments? Are there any questions, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Item F, motion to approve annual resolution regarding the report and expenditures of L T F M money. Motion to approve this. So move in a second.
Just every year, the board has to update and all that, like over. Just the protocol thing with the L T F M money, the state requires the district to come up with a new 10 year plan every year with the money that we expend off of L T F M. We've talked many times, about half of what we do for L T F M are obligated payments to a bond. The other half, we use windows, flooring, a lot of projects we've already talked about. But there's just some odd fluctuation from year to year that we have to deal with L T F M and planning of it. The nice thing about L T F M that I just learned within the last couple of years, that you can deficit spend. And they asked, how much can you deficit spend? And they said, yeah. Well, it gets to be too much a little bit, but I don't know, other comments or things on the L W M, L T F M?
Pretty much covered most of it there. It's a 10 year plan, but they really want you to focus on the next two years. And then beyond that, it's just rough estimates. A lot of our L T F M, it's almost 150, 160,000 a year. It's just maintenance on systems and making sure that we keep ourselves up, let alone a major system failure or a piece of equipment or a remodel and a something. So we will be needing to do some stuff with our fire system to bring it up to a more moderate. This is fascinating to me. I'm just gonna talk about this for a second. So we still have analog in our system and there's absolutely nothing wrong with it. But now our fire control board is no longer going to be supported. So we have to support, we have to go to the new one, which will no longer support. So that, and we're already, and we're already way past when they wanted us to move off the board, but there's nothing wrong with it. So I just, I don't know, those things kind of fascinating. I know it's kind of geeky. But so over the next three years, we'll be working on changing out those different pieces to the system to get it all within stuff that will be supported better. What's the fire suppression system? Yeah, it's the sirens and lights and.
The big thing is the strobes and the lights are out of sequence because they were added later. And they all have to be in sequence throughout the whole building.
So it's strobes and then sounds?
Well, the strobes go off at an interval and then sound goes off at an interval.
They gotta match.
But everywhere in the building, you gotta match.
It's gotta be at exactly the same time.
It'd be same for all the streets.
And they don't at this time because they're on different pathways otherwise that are not the same.
Different ones were put in when the elementary went in, high school ones were updated.
It's only an issue if you're in certain hallways. I'm just gonna say that's not a good thing.
About three hallways and you stand and you're top.
That's the first thing that we're going to remedy.
Is it making you guess?
Well, I don't get why. It's not like I get to be on three hallways. It is, it is for students that have A S V.
Yeah. So I'm, yeah, it can be, it can trigger.
So we have to be careful of it.
Students, so we definitely don't want to have that.
That would be the first thing that will get done.
Yes, that's the first thing that we're gonna do. It makes sense though, if everything is smumpy, how disillusioned that could get so fast. Yeah, it is just for a reason. All for sure. And then we have the D C D rooms in the elementary media center that will start going on. And the rest of it is boring doors, windows, different. Very exciting things. All very necessary. Although if you go down to the elementary and see the flooring in the new rooms, it looks fabulous. So I would recommend that computer labs can be awesome, especially when they get the new cabinets in. Yeah. It's pretty exciting. For those of us that get excited about.
I get that. This is just.
A lot of this is very boring.
These are all things that are incorporated into a budget that we have.
Yeah. And the two spreadsheets are they, they pretty much give us our revenue. A lot of it is from levy, a lot of it covers the bond payments for the things that we already have existing, which will start to drop off over the next few years. And then there's just the maintenance side. So a piece of it comes from N D E and a piece of it comes from levy.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item G, a motion to approve annual renewal of membership with schools for equity in education. So move in a second.
Second.
Annual.
Yep, it's annual, it's since our enrollment's up a little bit, our E's up a little bit.
Questions or comments hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Item H, a motion to approve renewal of membership Minnesota State School Board Association. In a second.
Second.
Go without them.
Can't, but I wouldn't recommend it if there's one district and say Minnesota that is not part of MSBA.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion to approve resolution establishing filing dates. Motion please.
Accept.
In a second. Second.
Annual election year resolution for school districts. For any, anybody here that's up for reelection. Or anybody in the general community that wants to file for the school board. It'll run from July 30th to August 13th. You have to come to the district office, file an advocate for candidacy, $2 filing fee prior to five o'clock on August 13th, 2024. They want to run the board.
Why do they call it special election?
It's just part of the special election for the school board since it's part of the general election. That's what they call it. Yeah, it's not a special election on our part. It's a special election component that we have to put on the ballot for the regular election this fall.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next is a contract. Motion to approve contract for program administrative assistance.
Accept.
In a second.
I'll say.
You know, it's a little bit different because we've used the two program administrative assistants together. Both Polly Bearstein and Beverly's are now on one notice of assignments instead of separate ones. They work with the notice of assignment committee to come up with this proposal and both accepted it.
Two year contract.
Two year contract.
So for this past year and this coming year.
In the past, we've always kind of done one year contracts as opposed on an annual basis. But along with putting together, we created the two year notice of assignment form.
Input from the committee or questions or comments otherwise?
No input, I think I'm the only one here from the committee.
It's fine, we don't actually get meeting with them together, so we'll review it. They're okay with it.
No.
Very simple. Interesting.
Okay, thanks.
All in favor, aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Next is a motion to approve contract for Mars coordinator. So move in a second.
Second.
This one's a three year contract. We're sure Linda Kane, and we're already a year past it, so it's this past year and the next two years. The chair has been here since I've been here, she does. I don't know if there's an administrator here at the table, but she does have an outstanding job. Yeah, we need to work with her a little bit on her contract.
That's good. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving contract, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Your contract, a motion to approve technology specialist.
Building receptionist.
Sorry. Motion to approve contract for building receptionists.
Accept.
In a second. I'll say.
Went well, we came to an agreement.
Yep.
This is also a two year, this past year and this coming year.
Questions or comments? This is Joey.
Right.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Item L or item M, motion to approve contract for technology specialist. Motion please.
Accept.
Second, I'll say.
This is pretty much an addendum to her current contract. I shared with the board the pay equity, which within her position and her pay was very low as compared to the other people in her pay grade. We have to do a pay equity study every year, pay equity study every three years. And last time, we did get noted on some inconsistencies within our contract, which we had to fix. And that was for those that were here at the time of the longevity that we had put on some contracts. Same thing here in the same classification, this person who came up through the ranks as a para. We gave her an initial para salary on this where she was at. And within this position, she is rather low now compared to the building secretaries and receptionists. I would recommend we move her to just below currently where our building receptionists and our building administrative pay are, so that we don't get noted on the next pay equity. And I know you're never supposed to do any type of contract negotiations based upon performance. She does an outstanding job.
How long has she been there?
She's only been in that position for a year. She's been with the district for quite a while.
And she's helped with technology for many, many years. That's very interesting. Why keep her below the other ones?
She's all been direct, well, because of years. The other ones have been there more years, so she would be right below them in terms of only being in her position one year.
Okay.
Yep. So it's an effort by the district to create equity on hers versus if we don't do anything, I know we're gonna get noted on this.
When do you next report?
It's next year we do it, I believe. The pay equity thing, I think we did it in Michaela's first year here, so we would do it next year. And, and I'll do that for those two genders that you really look at being out of contracts. Really look out, so you want to keep those in line.
The city has been.
You can get a $3 hour increase from 2050 to 2350. You would get a $3 hour increase from 2050 to 2350.
Question or comment? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion for adjournment?
I support.
In a second.
Second.
Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.